It's one of those very, very rare occasions where the superintendent is opening the school committee meeting. And I'm doing that because this is the school committee's annual reorganizational meeting, where a new chair and a secretary will be vogue it. Before we get to that, though, it's my pleasure to welcome two new school committee members to the Sherburne School Committee. We have Ms. Kate Potter and Ms. Jennifer Deven joining us, having been duly elected last month. So, welcome, and I know we all look forward to your service, and thank you for that. So, the tradition that the Sherburne School Committee is held is that the superintendent will start the reorganization phase of this meeting by asking for nomination for the chair position. I'll look for that to be seconded, and then we'll call a vote. Once the chair, the new chair is nominated and elected, I will very happily and gladly turn the meeting back over to the new chair, who will then call for nominations and a vote for the secretary position. So, at this time, do I have a nomination for the position of chairman?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Greg Garland to the position of chairman.
Mr. Embry has nominated Mr. Garland for the position of chairman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Hovey has seconded that. I'll take a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Garland being elected chair, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
(laughing).
Don't you be...
(inaudible) majority, all right.
I quickly heard "none" before Greg could talk. Congratulations, Mr. Garland, and I will happily turn the meeting over to you.
Thanks. I'm sure there are a lot of people out there watching that never thought this would happen. So, we need a secretary. So, I'll take nominations for secretary.
I would like to nominate Ms. Hovey for secretary.
Ms. Hovey? Any other nominations? No?
Need a second.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, it is. Ann is the secretary. Ms. Hovey is the secretary. So, I guess we need to go on to other school committee assignments. And you've got a list in your packet. I think we've discussed some of these, right? Amongst ourselves, people who have indicated interest in certain things. We're going to nominate you for a number of them, or I can appoint. But I'm here. Okay. Okay. So, we've got a secretary. You don't need a vice chairperson. Warrants, we're all on the warrant committee. I guess, do we need to be formally appointed, or we're just on it, right?
This list... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
As I say, I will contact the proper people and change from me to you as the point of contact.
Okay.
Yes.
So, there's no action required, Greg, on this item, as the chair has the authority to appoint?
Okay. Excellent.
And you're just reviewing the assignments with the numbers.
Okay. Some of them, I think, were suggestions. So, payroll, is that the chair? Is that me primarily? Okay. And everybody else is an alternate? Budget, of course, we're all doing that. Superintendent evaluation, I think I have to do that as chair.
That's an easy one this year.
Yep. Union 50? I'd like to be on that, so I assume I am as chair.
That's you, me, and then a third.
Yeah, that's chair, secretary, and...
Ah, okay. So, the Union 50 really is the group that votes on the superintendent?
Yeah.
Has a couple of duties. You'll be in meetings, like, you'll be in a meeting, and there'll be other people voting, but it won't be you voting if it's not the Union 50. So, it's a little bit odd. But there's no real... There's generally joint meetings, and there's no real other responsibility, other than being one of the three that votes for the superintendent. So, Scott?
Yeah.
Kate has an interest in that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else? I assume we just need one person. I think Ann should be our policy person. She's done such a good job of that in the past. Is that all right?
Yep.
Good.
Technology. Scott, do you still want to do that?
Yes.
Do we need another person for that?
Police. It's helpful, especially if there's an interest.
There's an interest, and if there's a meeting, there's not too many meetings, but it'd be nice if...
Yeah.
I'll... If nobody else wants...
I'm doing it.
Okay. Jennifer, excellent. Building and facilities. So, we've talked Mr. Hess into staying on. I'd like to stay on. I think Keisha Lipton, who's an architect, she's a great resource, she's going to do that as a member of the community. Hopefully Sean Colleen will, even though he's a selectman. I haven't talked with him yet. And I'm thinking engineers are great to have on the building committee. Scott?
Oh.
Anybody else an engineer?
Train conductors?
Yeah.
Will you do that?
Sure. Excuse me.
Educator evaluation subcommittee, I'm told Kate might like to do that.
I would.
Was Kate aware that she wanted to do that?
Was.[420.31][420.31](laughing).
Wellness?
I'm interested in that.
Okay. Anybody else?
And people, I would also...
Yeah, and Kate, too.
Okay. Pine Hill CSA.
Well, I did it this year, but maybe Kate, being off the board recently, would you like to be kind of the direct liaison back to...
Well, I'm actually still on it.
Oh.
So, I'm having to...
I could, or I could do it. If it's going to be...
Do it? I mean, I don't know. I'm assuming it doesn't matter if we have one or two?
So, that's...
But if she's still on it, should I do it?
Oh, no, because school council's different from CSA in that respect. So, she can still do it.
Yeah.
So, CSA?
I mean, unless you want to do it. I'm just saying I'll be there anyway.
Yeah, but there's a couple others that I'm interested in, so...
So, that's Kate?
Kate.
All right. School council?
I'm interested in that.
Okay. And other people can attend the school council meeting, so...
Oh, yes, yeah, they're open.
Right? Jennifer, anybody else want to have their name on a list? Okay, so that's Jennifer. Tech representative? Do we have to have one of those? We can't vote at those meetings, and the meeting... Do you go to the meetings, or does...
I try to attend those meetings. I anticipate that at the Joint School Committee, the three school committees will designate the superintendent as the voting board member.
Right. You are. So, we can't vote, but so do you think we...
There are other school committee members from other member towns that do attend.
But they can vote.
Some do, and some do not.
Okay. Those meetings were typically like Friday morning at...
Friday mornings at 8:15. If someone's interested...
You probably would like to do that.
If someone is interested and wants to be a backup in case there's a meeting I cannot attend, but it's not absolutely necessary.
Okay, so...
So, I could be a backup. I don't mind doing that, I just can't attend for Friday.
Ann is backup.
There are six meetings a year, and I think I was able to make one, so could you do five?[570.33][570.33](laughing). I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Challenge success.
Yes, I'd like to do that.
All right.
Yeah, I'm already in your wheelhouse.
Does anybody... I mean, I assume we can have more than one. Does anybody else want to do that? No? Then we get down to CPAC. Ann?
Yeah.
Will you do that? So, there were a couple other things. There are the... There's a big one. I'm saving the best for last. But there was a potential 40B Development Committee, a town committee, where we, I think, wanted to have a seat at the table to discuss the 40B developments. And I... So, if anybody would like to do that, if that materializes, just to... It's more just understanding what's going on and what the other town departments, I believe...
We'd be listening in mostly during that.
Yes.
It wouldn't be like we would be voting on anything.
I don't think so, no. It's just more of information gathering.
I'm interested in that. Is there anyone else that could kind of... It might become a lot, I'm not sure. We just don't know what to anticipate.
We can change it as we go along. It's just if they create that, we'll have somebody to go to. And then we can... That's, I guess, that's not a formal school committee. We talked about somebody being on the assistant principal search.
I'm going to do that as well.
Is that right? Ann, you're looking over...
Yep, that's right.
Superintendent search committee, which is going to be an important project starting in the fall, or... Did we have anybody that indicated interest in that?
It depends on what happens with negotiation committee.
Stealing... Well...
Too many.
Just saying.
We're not...
We don't need to name someone to that, I don't think, yet, but we do need to name...
Superintendent search? Okay. You're right.
Someone to be able to negotiate.
Yeah, that's the first one.
Stealing my thunder. So, negotiations. So, I'm going to do that provisionally, unless, of course, somebody else wants to do it. The issue with negotiations is we really don't, until we have a discussion with the teachers' union, we really don't know what format it's going to take, if it's going to be collaborative bargaining or traditional, when it's going to happen. Last time, it was a lot of Saturdays from September through... I forget when, February. It seemed like it went on forever. Prior to that negotiation, I'm told it was four or five Saturdays. I can't do Saturdays, so it might be in the evening. So, I'm going to do it provisionally, and I'd like somebody else, because I don't want to have to appoint somebody. So, we really don't know what form it's going to take. So, I'm looking for somebody that's going to say, "I'm interested." It's a lot of work, and it's critically important, especially for Sherburne, because we don't have as much money as Dover. So, I'd like to get somebody that's interested, and is going to try to be able to do it. We've got to have somebody, so...
I'll do it necessary, but I could also just be your backup in case it doesn't...
(laughing). It's like being the backup.
I'm good at backup.
So...
Aren't we having a closed session tomorrow?
So, it's going to be... There's a 50 percent chance that I'm not going to be able to do it, is the bottom line. So, you're going to be taking my spot.
Right.
Like 49 and 51?
Pardon?
It's 50 percent.
Yeah, yeah. And we need to...
We're like 7:30, it'll be Saturday.
We need, I need a name, if not right now, soon, because tomorrow we have a meeting to discuss it, and we have set up Friday morning at 7:30 a meeting to elect a chair and sort of move forward, which is basically data collection. We met, last time we met, and I almost scared you off, but every Wednesday during the summer in the morning. And you can join by phone sometimes, but it's really organizing the data collection. There's less of that to do this time, so let me...
I have a question. Would the person who was on negotiations would then not be on the superintendent search? Would that be... Those are two big committees.
You could, I mean, you could, but it's going to be... It's just, it's going to be a lot of time. In the superintendent search, I would envision that maybe... Well, I don't know. It's just going to, it's going to be a lot.
(inaudible) holidays.
So, I'll let you, I'll let you think about it. Maybe by the end of the night, somebody will step forward, because, but we need somebody.
Okay, I think we were thinking it was after the... We were assuming, or I think myself, maybe Jennifer, were assuming, based on tomorrow's meeting, there'd be more of an idea of...
I thought we were going to get maybe a little more information about it.
Well, there's not... There's... I envision tomorrow, talking about issues that you may want to bring to the table, but it's really going to be up in the air about format and time until, because we need to move forward with the committee, so we can get a chair, so we can go talk to the teachers rep, to then determine what's going to happen, you know? We're just... And ultimately, they decide a couple of things, but the whole group together decides a lot of what goes on. So, I'll leave that open for right now, and maybe by tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Was there, was there anything else?
The superintendent search, do we have to decide that?
We don't. And she was saying it depends on what happens with negotiations, so just be thinking about that, because that's not going to, that's not going to gel until the fall, or until September.
Right.
Okay. Is that it for reorg?
There's a question whether we should consider adding Metco as a subcommittee.
Sorry about that.
Because it seems that if CPAC is there, if there's challenge success, that Metco is an important program that would benefit from some more input from the community, more just more awareness by the community.
So, liaison, a liaison more?
Like a liaison, so that things could be reported back to the school committee about things going on with Metco.
That sounds like a good idea. Does anybody have an objection to that?
No.
Does anybody want to be a Metco liaison?
I would love to do it. I am already...
Yeah, Kate's got probably out of the five of us as the expert.
Doing that, so...
You're already doing it?
I mean, I'm already working with the Metco director from Millen High School.
You're the natural liaison then, right?
So, unless that's a conflict of interest, I'd love to.
She's already the liaison.
If you're just reporting out...
She's liaised. She's pre-liaised. All right.
It's probably a few people that know more about it than she.
Anything else? All right. Item four on the agenda, public comment. There being none, we'll move to five. Administration reports, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Greg. First up is Dr. Brown, who has a few comments regarding her report.
Just a few comments. Obviously, you can see I've provided an update regarding enrollment trends, an update on the teacher search. We have two finalist candidates who are awaiting appointment from the superintendent. We anticipate that will happen soon. And I mentioned at a previous meeting, we had 228 applicants for our two teaching positions, and I'm confident that we have moved forward to candidates who are intellectually and compassionately meet the bill for Pine Hill School. I would like to publicly thank Nancy Bent... The, we call her Command Center, works in the reception position in the administrative assistant team at Pine Hill. Nancy is retiring after 16 years. She was the school nurse prior to working in the front office, and her proofreading skills, her knowledge of students, and her high-level humor will be greatly missed, but we wish her well in her retirement. I'd also like to publicly thank Mr. Magordi for his three years of service as our assistant Frank has been appointed as a school principal in another town, and he's, they're very fortunate to be getting his... An educator who brings heart and soul every day, big shoes to fill, big shoes to fill at Pine Hill School. You are all invited to an ice cream social this Thursday evening. Our CSA has a tradition with kicking off the year with ice cream and closing the school year with ice cream. So, this Thursday, the 16th, graduates, community members are all welcome. 5:30, I want to say. 5 o'clock?
I think it said 5.
5 to 6:30.
5 to 6:30. 5 to 6:30.[1200.12][1200.12](laughing). And we just posted our assistant principal position, and I will keep Jen in the loop as we screen the applicants and decide who to interview and when to interview. We have a loose plan for that right now. Unless there's any questions about the principal's report, I'll pass it back to superintendent.
I've got one question. In looking at the physical activity and health, the differences between Chicaring and Pine Hill, so there are differences, and it made me wonder, I think it would be interesting to see next fall, the time spent on, because it seems like a lot of times with the foreign language program and other things, time gets really sliced up. I would be interested, if anybody else would be.
Are you talking handoff?
No.
No, it's in the wellness implementation guidelines.
It's just, it's how, like, it's about physical education. How many times per week, how many minutes per week for different classes, and we have health, like, one-third of the year, that type of thing. I think it would be interesting to see the time breakout of how class time is spent.
We'd be happy to provide that information.
If that's not...
And well, well before budget season, in case you have any recommendations for us moving forward.
Say that again?
So, we can do that well before budget season, in case you have recommendations.
Just to sort of get a sense, and if there's a way to sort of compare it to Chicaring, not that one's good or bad, but in general, just to see what the differences are.
So, are we talking about, because this is under Karen?
Yes, it is.
So, can we join through you, but then we can ask more questions?
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, I'm confused.
Oh, I'm sorry. This was not in the principal's...
It was in Karen's.
Oh.
It's stapled to it, so you would think.
Yeah, see, the option is on scroll, so it's a different order. I can't get there.
Sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. I was just trying to clarify.
If that's not a huge burden, I would like to see that information next September.
Sorry, I do have a question for staffing. It's between Pine Hill and Chicaring. Our current plus program, we have Ms. Bridge, and Ms. Romero is at Chicaring?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're looking for adding a third person to share, time share between the two schools, or something like that? Is that...
In next year's budget, our plan is to make Ms. Bridge full-time.
Okay.
Currently, she's .7.
Right.
To make Ms. Roma full-time, currently she's .8, and to add a .4.
Shared.
Shared between the two elementary schools to facilitate kindergarten-level instruction.
Okay.
So, for Pine Hill, it's a total add of .5 FTE, if it was less.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for refreshing my memory on that.
Any other questions regarding the principal's report?
We'll get, we'll get to hear what came back with the survey in September, maybe more like October, November.
You're referring to our school advisory council has, currently has an open survey for families to please complete by June 15th. We want and welcome your feedback, and our school advisory council will aggregate the data and provide some recommendations and some commendations based on our family feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Garland, for the nice segue to the wellness implementation guidelines.
You're welcome.
You know that you voted the policy for wellness just recently, and this is sort of the implementation guidelines, the so what of the wellness policy. I want to publicly thank those who served on the wellness policy subgroup. It was food service director, Janelle Madden, Dover Sherburne School Committee member, Lauren Doherty, parent representatives, Donna Moore and Jen Lawrence, the DS Wellness Department Chair, Darah Johnson, a regional health educator, Andrea Merritt, nurse leader, Jill Fedor, who happens to be a Pine Hill nurse, and community representative, Mimi Creer and myself. And that was a subgroup that was formed from the wellness committee, from whom Jen has just joined us. And that wellness committee meets twice a year. So, these implementation guidelines went before that wellness committee, but also will be part of what's posted to the DS website under curriculum. So, you'll see these guidelines. These were developed with, what is the sort of the theoretical lens for the four areas of PE, nutrition, health, social and emotional learning, which is guidance, and then what is our state currently? So, when you look at the oversight, which is page one, it talks about a comprehensive look at the physical, social, emotional health and wellness for students and staff, following those federal, state, and local statutes, as well as those professional organizations that support these areas. And of particular interest, if you look at page two, is physical activity and health. On page two, it talks about the Centers for Disease Control and Shape America, which is the Society of Health and Physical Educators, recommends 150 minutes for PE. That's a recommendation nationwide for PE. And those professional organizations, of which there are many, for every topic we could teach at every level, suggests what they believe is what should happen. We looked at what is happening, both at Pine Hill, Chicaring, and the region, and it's comparable to what other districts are doing. Is this something that maybe someday we could aspire to? I would suggest that the wellness coordinator for the region thinks we should, you know, but, I mean, we could incorporate students' physical activity at recess, students' physical activity in the classroom, encompassing that 150 minutes, not just being in PE class. So, I just wanted to just clarify why it's there, to show what sort of the nation decides.
Recess is included.
Recess can be included, yes. But for the physical activity, they're saying it should be a PE class.
Right. So, the National Association is advocating that at the elementary level, students participate in 150 minutes of guided physical education.
Per week.
And wellness activities per week.
But we only do 40? What am I missing?
Right. So, what's happening at Pine Hill, the kindergarten receive 40 minutes per week. In addition, grades one and two receive 40-minute health class for half a year, grade three, 40-minute health class for one-third, and grade four students, 40-minute health class every fourth, every other week, and grade five in one puberty class. And recess is provided once per day for 25 minutes, and then the DARE classes with the officer from the Sherburne Police Department is also included in that. So, it's also the physical activity students see during the school day, so we include recess in that, but here, we're just capturing what's physical and what's the health activities. At the elementary level, health education is embedded in those PE classes, as you can see here, but it's also embedded in the science curriculum. So, this is the state of the, of what is happening across the four schools, and we felt it was important to highlight what is happening.
So, just, it's important, I think, to understand that all of the learning areas have both state and national professional associations that many of our staff belong to, and they all, they all develop guidelines. So, in some, in some cases, it could be the number of minutes, for example, that students participate in wellness activities. It could be staffing guidelines, the number of full-time nurses for every X number of students. We see that in guidance. They have, they have national guidelines. So, all of these organizations develop these guidelines, which in my experience have been, have always been more aspirational than, than what I think realistically, you know, a public school district could provide. But it's also important to note that the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does not have these requirements. So, they do not purposely, do not promote or identify these requirements.
But it would be almost impossible to have 100. You'd have to have another PE teacher, and, I mean, there's not enough time in the day to do that. To call it, to call it PE.
Right.
What we call PE.
Right, right.
And they say at least 150 minutes is recommended.
Right, exactly.
So, we are very far apart from that.
Yeah. It's, I'm, right. And again, I think that it's not unusual, especially in, in documents like this, to see the national guidelines identified. Again, it's a, it's a, it's a point... Again, it's a point for discussion, and it's also, I think, a point for the district, for school committees, for staff, to look at, what is probably most appropriate is to look at those districts that we, you know, we would typically benchmark ourselves against, you know, for comparative.
Is there something that sort of ties in with that? I know, for instance, when it's cold out, or if it's raining hard and recess is inside, is there a way that that could somehow be coordinated to become more physical activity? Because it's not, I mean, there's not enough space in a classroom to do a whole lot, but maybe something to think about so that at least you know that those 25 minutes of recess at least will provide an opportunity for exercise in addition to the one PE class a week?
Certainly something the Pine Hill administration could look at.
Yeah, it depends. Often, the gym's not available because of PE instruction, and it comes down to supervision and crowd control. Teachers by contract have a set amount of duty that they can do per week, so looking within those parameters, we could definitely try to be as creative as possible using the auditorium.
I would think it'd only be meaningful if anybody else does it, and I can imagine, I mean, if nobody else does it, it's just that. It's aspirational, and it's not.
There's also a national movement for how do we document the movement that happens regularly in the classroom? So I mean, there's movement throughout the school day and how teachers transition. I was in a first-grade classroom recently, and how they transitioned was they did some...
Go noodle, probably.
Yes, thank you. Which was a software where kids could choose, and then they did some sort of a movement to music, and then transitioned to their next activity. So that's a way for our educators, they're already doing it, to embed it in the classroom to get to those 150 minutes. But it was important for the subgroup to make sure that it was documented here, what the national benchmark was, and then to also capture what we have.
The other piece, and I appreciate that it's not part of the instructional day, but our students who participate in box two mornings a week before school have the added advantage of all the brain research and physical activity.
Is it true that there's one recess per day for kindergarten? Are there two?
Kindergarten has two 25-minute recesses per day, and the other grade levels have one, and thank you for catching that. The other thing that has changed, DARE, with the revision of the DARE curriculum, in lieu of eight 40-minute sessions, we now have 10 40-minute sessions for the fifth-grade DARE, Keeping It Real curriculum.
I'll make those edits. And then the rest, the next section is under nutrition. Janelle Madden has been before you, talking about all of the things that have happened with food service over the past year. I know there are two new members, talking about at least two choices of fruits, non-fried vegetables, that the Massachusetts Farm to School project, which is amazing, the work that happens there. They're expanding the scratch cooking recipes, and then all the safe food training. So we're looking to just continue that. You'll see the nutrition guidelines are listed on a chart, which you'll see from pages seven to 10, and those are aligned to the USDA. Janelle uses the software whenever she plans meals to assure that it's a balanced nutritional meal that our students are receiving, and it's well-received, especially here at Pine Hill.
Are we going to continue the Pine Hill Veggieville Garden?
I'm going to let Farmer McGordy speak to that.
Well, it's sort of up and running. It's got started, actually Donna Moore, a parent who children in middle school now, she actually went to Poosit, got some seedlings. I had a first and third grade class, we planted some lettuce, onions, scallions, kale. There's a few plants, so I'm actually going to put out a sign-up genius, so families can sign up. Two families for a week over the course of the summer. It's on automatic sprinkler watering. They can come in, enjoy the produce, and hopefully it'll still be running, so it can go into the kitchen, if there's things still going in the fall. So that's the plan for that. Thank you.
Very nice. On page 11, you'll see health services. This was written in collaboration with Jill Fedor, our nurse leader, and the other nurses at our three other buildings. It's just a statement of what the health services are for our four buildings. It's certainly not a comprehensive look at what happens there. And then on page 12, the social and emotional health. We asked our school-based guidance and counseling educators to encapsulate what the development approach to school counseling is, and you can see on page 12, it talks about what the elementary years are and what that means for school counseling. It's a time for children to transition from home to school, discover the excitement of learning, develop social skills, build peer relationships, and look towards that strive for independence as they then transition to the middle school. And what's the role of the school counselor? To assist those students and those families as those students transition to Pine Hill and then to the region. And then you'll see the middle school student and then the high school student. So those are the implementation guidelines.
I have to say, sort of looking at this, all the other categories seem to have bullet points, they had specific reference points, and it felt like the social-emotional health was very, was kind of anecdotal. It just felt very different, and to me, it felt, it gave off a feeling of less, not less important, but less serious almost. It was kind of like, it just seemed to me that because I know this is such an important issue, and it's becoming increasingly so, that perhaps a little bit, it should be tightened a little bit and be more specific about what it really, what the expectations of the program are with the limitations are to some degree, and to somehow make it seem more of a formal explanation of the program, rather than, you know, talking about the elementary years are exciting and stimulating time, whereas the others are like, okay, these are the calories that you can have. It's the number of hours of PE we need to do. Does that make?
It does. You know, maybe to cite some of their professional organizations, but you can see even under the PE, it talks about the goals of PE, it talks about some of the ideas and the benchmarks, what illiterate students should know and be able to do. You know, I think the counselors took a counseling approach to this narrative.
Well, I think so too. I was just thinking, to make it a comprehensive document that sort of feels the same from start to finish, that's something to think about. It just felt to me like this was the least, it felt like it was the least important of the topics, and I know that's not the case. So I just want to make sure it gets the focus and the attention that it deserves.
Thank you. Is there any other feedback on the wellness guidelines?
One other thing also didn't mention, to me it seemed directly, didn't mention challenge success, which I think would be part of that, or at least some of those things that are encompassed with challenge success.
There would be a link to span DS, challenge success, some of the initiatives we have happening, also on the wellness page that's linked to my assistant superintendent under curriculum. This is where this will be posted, and we'll let families know where it is.
Okay. And that'll be updates. Right now, it's the DESE. I wrote down what it is. Somewhere. Anyway, it links to like the official Massachusetts State documents right now. So it'll change to this when it's done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's a comprehensive look, so I appreciate your perspective and your time to review it. Just one more thing from my report, I just wanted to just do an update on the K-12 Fine Arts Department Chair and the 612 Technology Engineering Department Chair. That was a reorganization that helped, happened last spring. This past year, Janice Barry has worked to solidify the music and art curriculums. She's making sure students have access to high-quality experience. She's conducted some professional development for staff, attended statewide conferences, coordinated, attended the building and district-based music and art concerts and shows. She's interfaced with the Friends of the Performing Arts, and just been an overall advocate for arts staff. I've met with her monthly. I know she's a presence in buildings as much as she can. She teaches .8 music at Chicering, and has her own time of .2 to do all of this other work. Next year, she'll assume supervision evaluation in concert with the primary evaluator, who is the building principal. So that's what's going to happen next year, and I will continue to work with her, as well as Nick Grouse, who is the Technology Engineering 612 Department Chair. But Janice has been before you at the Joint School Committee. I know you can get a benefit of hearing some of the bullet points of what she had been doing in the October Joint School Committee meeting. So I appreciate the funding, as does she, and as do our teachers.
And if I may insert, I was impressed to see the professional development that Janice will be coordinating this summer across K-12 for some ensemble work and other curriculum areas.
Thank you.
I think it'd be great if, and I don't know if she'll have time, especially if she's adding evaluations on top of that, but if she could be the point person for parents, if they have questions about arts, the performing arts, which I don't think the parents realize now, that's been my experience, just as someone, because otherwise it seems to go to the building person or to, who knows? It sort of goes all over, and it'd be nice to have her as the point person for questions and information. She's doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. For superintendent's report, there are two items of focus. First is enrollment, and next is, just very briefly, staffing update for next year. In terms of enrollment, you have some documents in your packet. The first is the monthly report, which shows enrollment as of the various months, going back to January. Happy to report that, for the first time, I think since October frankly, the enrollment did not change from one month to the next. It took us till June 1st.
It changed as of Wednesday.
Oh, really?
Just saying, yeah.
Good.
It was after June 1st.
The last 10 days. Okay. Did it go up or down, Barbara?
We picked up a third-grade student last Thursday, was her first day.
Good. Last two weeks will be helpful, I'm sure.
Join, just came to school.
Lovely student.
For the last week.
Very happy to be here.
They all are.
Take the summer off.
So as this is, I'm not going to repeat what I've written out in the memorandum, but you'll note that there are a couple of observations. One of note is that enrollment grew by twice as many students this past year as it did the year before, from September through the end of the year. In my experience, for a school of this size, adding 12 students from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, well, I guess it's 13 now, is unusual. It's not something that I've seen often at all. And whether the growth that has been experienced this year is an anomaly, or in fact, whether it's the beginning of a multi-year growth spurt, I think we won't officially know until we start seeing certainly the data next October, which will give us three years' worth of data, but anecdotally, it certainly appears from everything we are experiencing that this year is not an anomaly. This past year has not been an anomaly, and that we would expect growth, moderate growth certainly, to continue into next year, and perhaps beyond. What is important, and I noted this at the last meeting, is that we're at a point now where the number of fifth graders who are moving on, and the number of kindergarten students who are coming in, that gap has really narrowed to the point where there's just an eight-student difference, you know, this year, transitioning into next year. So that's something certainly for us to keep an eye on as we work on projections for future years. The second document I'd like to just focus on is the one that is titled Pine Hill Projected Enrollment, updated as of June 9, and it has six columns. The first column on the left is next year's grade K right down through five. So the way that this document, what this document indicates is that it provides information on the current number of students. We'll have to add that, what grade, third grader? Third grade, who will be moving into fourth grade, right?
Yes.
Okay. New students. So there's a column there that identifies the number of new students who have officially registered, indicating new to Pine Hill, so they'll be brand-new to the school in September. We have a column for students leaving, so that's the outmigration that we typically, there's some outmigration that we experience every year. Total confirmed. And then the last column is, these are numbers of students whose families have been in touch with the Pine Hill administration and the front office, indicating that they've either purchased a home, they have a purchase and sales agreement on a home, and that they intend to register their students for enrollment next year. Again, new students to the school. So the way the numbers work is that we're making, these numbers make one assumption, which I think is important to note, because the assumption likely will change over the summer, but we're assuming that all students who are enrolled as of now with this report will be here in September. So the numbers speak to themselves. When you look at these numbers, the interesting, the other piece of data that you don't have, but I just received some data in the last couple of days, it was the in-and-out register that was kept last summer after school closed, identifying the names of students and the grades of students who left the district over the summer, and the numbers of students who did enroll. And what's interesting is that that data suggests that between the close of school and late in August, right before school opened, there were 17 students, new registrations, and 17 net. So that's net of new students who came in and registered over the summer and students who left. Right now, we just know of one student who is moving, at least that was as of June, but it'll be interesting as we monitor these numbers, especially over the next six weeks, what the outmigration looks like. Because last year's outmigration was fairly low. There were not a lot of move-outs versus the in-migration. So right now, you know, if you take that total confirmed and add the highly potential, we assume that these students who have indicated their, whose parents have indicated they will be enrolling, we have growth there that, especially in grades three and four, that are above what was projected back in October, based on our cohort survival methodology. Our kindergarten numbers right now, you know, we would project 66. The kindergarten students, we have 65 confirmed. It's, I think it's 99.9% that those 65 students will be here in September. Those students aren't leaving. And we have one who has indicated they're coming, so that puts us with the three sections right now that are projected, right at 22. So we're watching that number really carefully. As Barbara had indicated, there are two new sections that are being staffed. Final decisions on what grades will receive those two new sections have not been made, but based on the numbers, I think our focus for the last few weeks certainly has been grades three and four. So as Barbara had explained in a letter that went home to parents about placement, I thought the letter was really well-written, very clear, and basically, we will continue to monitor these numbers. In terms of the kindergarten numbers, if we need to create a third section.
Fourth section.
A fourth section in kindergarten, but if we need to go beyond the two sections that we have budgeted, I think, Greg, you and I should have some conversations about the possibility at some point of calling, scheduling a meeting, so the school committee can... can hear some recommendations on how we move forward. And I would see that as a one-agenda item meeting, that we just focus on some recommendations, based on, again, based on the numbers as they look probably closer to the end of July. So, I think that's good for enrollment, and happy to answer any questions on that. All right, with staffing for next year, as you've heard, we have the two classroom teacher positions. Two excellent candidates have been recommended. We're in the process now of just scheduling them to come in to meet with me and make that official. The Ms. Bridge, her position has been increased from a .7 FTE to a 1.0 FTE, and what is not on this list is the part-time FLESS position that will be shared between Chicaring and Pine Hill, and there is a recommended candidate, actually, who's coming in tomorrow to meet with me. So, the staff at Pine Hill has really done a good job, the administration and their team, and we do have a couple of vacancies for EA positions that I know, do we have? Oh, no, we don't. No, so as of this point, we do not. That's great. I'm thinking of another school. So, we're looking really good in terms of staffing. Turnover's been low, and we're in good shape there.
Bill?
Yes.
Also, I mentioned earlier, Ms. Bent is retiring, so she's not part of the teaching staff, but who is going to fill her role?
We posted the position, and we were excited to appoint Janay Aguilera, who has worked in a job share with Nancy Bent this year, and Janay will be at the helm full-time next year. So, this year afforded a nice transition for that position.
Yes, Scott, thank you for that. It reminds me that we need, I need to look at this format, and we need to make sure that all of the positions are being identified. So, we'll do that and update that.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Next. Six, finance report.
So, there are two items for consideration. The first is the review of the monthly report as of May 31, and provided you with some information regarding the documents that are in your packet. There's a narrative, document number one is the narrative regarding the end-of-the-year report, and the bottom line is that we're projecting, at this point, in the salary accounts, an end-of-the-year positive variance of a little more than $51,000, and again, you'll find that in the narrative report. And there's also information about, that addresses the difference between the May 31 balance of $60,000 and how and why we're projecting $51,000. So, that's pretty clear, and I can go over that if you'd like. In terms of the expenditures, the current balance as of May 31 was a little more than $128,000. We're anticipating a positive variance at year-end of $75,000. And actually, document three spells out how we get from the current, the May 31 balance to a projected year-end balance, so you can take a look at that. And what we've tried to do in projecting the year-end is to separate the budget out from the in-district Pine Hill budget, which is the operating expenses, salaries and operating expenses for everything that happens at Pine Hill, inside the confines, pre-K to five. And then there's also the special education out-of-district and out-of-district transportation expenses. And what's unique for both Dover and Sherborne is that the Sherborne School Committee, in this case, budgets for all of the pre-K to 12, out-of-district costs. So, this portion of the budget, the out-of-district portion, the special education out-of-district portion, represents the cost of tuitions and transportation for all Sherborne students pre-K to grade 12-plus, actually, right through the age of 22. And in that budget, we're projecting a positive variance of $86,000, and then beyond that, there's $183,000 of circuit breaker reimbursement that is included in that. So, there's a conservative estimate for end-of-the-year budget in total, including circuit breaker reimbursement, of just under $400,000. And we would expect the circuit breaker to be large, because that is...
Under-budgeted.
Right. Exactly.
A quick question. So, the circuit breaker, if that money stays in special fund, whatever it is, for a year, right?
Well, when we do the special, with the revolving funders, the fund is only funded with a hundred thousand. So, if there's $183,000...
Circuit breaker term. We're going to use 100 of that to put into the fund, and the other 83,000 will revert back to the town's general fund.
But it goes back immediately? I thought it was hell, I thought that money, you did it late, and I thought it stayed around for a year before it went back to the general fund.
No, that's not the case. So, logistically, what happened, what happens is, the circuit breaker, quote, "turnback", actually is monies that come from the operating budget, because we receive circuit breaker reimbursement on a quarterly basis from the state. We'll have the last payment at the end of the month, June 30. That's when we'll receive the last quarterly FY16 circuit breaker reimbursement. What happens is that the out-of-district costs are first charged to the circuit breaker account, so that money is spent down. So, that leaves the operating balance, effectively.
So, that money doesn't stay there for another year for those out-of-district costs to be charged?
So, the law states that districts are supposed to spend that money in the year they receive it, which would be FY16. If there is a balance left in that account, the funds should remain in the circuit breaker account, which is a separate account, it's not part of the general fund of the town, and the school committee has the authority to expend those funds for special education costs. What typically and traditionally has happened is that those funds have been spent, so there's usually an end-of-the-year adjustment made to reflect that purchase orders, for example, are charged to that circuit breaker account to spend it down, and then any surplus, which goes back to the town, or traditionally has in the past, actually comes from that special education out-of-district budget. That's where the surplus resides. That's right.
Can you refresh my memory on how the money in the special fund is being set up? How we tap that? Is that, that's a town meeting?
To advisory and, is it advisory or, no, I think it's a vote of the school committee? I don't remember.
No, so I think that the action of town, you're talking about setting up the special education stabilization fund.
But to get money out of it?
Yeah, that is, I believe it was written so that the district would go to the advisory committee to request funds.
We didn't want to go to school. We didn't want to have to go through a town meeting.
Right.
Okay, so we just come to you.
If you found a year where your circuit revolving fund is not going to be adequate to cover special education funds, special education funds, you could come to advisory and say we need to tap into this 100,000 stabilization fund.
Is that, is that how it was set up?
No, I think it's also because of the actual school.
Yeah. No, that's your reserve account, but, right. I think, we'll just, I just want to follow up on that, because the stabilization fund is set up under one of the mass general laws, and it's the language in the general laws that determines how the funds can be appropriated, how monies can be appropriated from the stabilization fund. I think it's by vote of a town meeting. So, what would happen is, the advisory committee would make a recommendation to town meeting to appropriate the funds.
So, it's got to be a vote of town meeting, so if that's in May, that's awkward sort of timing for setting a budget, right? I mean, that's, so we just have to...
It is a little awkward, I mean, if, in the way that...
But that's what it's for, right? I mean...
That is the purpose.
By May, you would also have an idea of a year's budget to say you're here, you have a deficit, or you're going to need it. And then, the other option is, there's been many times when you have a special town meeting in the fall, for something, if there was an emergency that you needed it, you would be able to set up a special town meeting.
Yes, exactly.
But couldn't we also, because the way that we pay off bills, we could still get a vote for May, have paid it through other means and then cover other costs?
Right.
Right. That way we save ourselves from the special town meeting.
That's right. The obligations would not go unpaid. You would meet our obligations financially, but then, in the end, it would depend on, you know, what the projection was for the end of the year, which traditionally, in past years, really hasn't been an issue because a large majority of special education costs have been funded in the budget. So, there's typically that circuit breaker money that's available, but there were two changes for the FY17 budget. We did adjust the percentage that we would, for lack of a better word, supplement the operating budget with, in terms of the anticipated circuit breaker money. And number two, and perhaps more importantly, is the new methodology for budgeting. So, based on trend budgeting, three-year average, you know, we're anticipating that, we don't know how that's going to work, actually.
I don't anticipate seeing a $395,000 turnback next year.
Right. I agree.
We went from 40, just to, we went from 40% reimbursement, budgeting 40% reimbursement, to 60, is that correct? So, and we're expecting, say, a 75% overall reimbursement. So, that's 35 points there, and we're taking up 20 of that, so if it were this 183, next year, it'd be more like 70 or something like that. It'd be much smaller, much smaller. Okay. If we continue to budget it 60%.
Right.
Okay.
And the state reimburses it continually at that level.
Yes, it's handsome bucks.
So, the bottom line here is, our projections are, I think they're conservative, but there's a healthy positive variance that will go back to, go back to the town's general fund. And in light of that, the next item under financial matters is a recommendation for some end-of-the-year purchase requests, and this is a fairly typical, I'm sorry...
Before you get to that, the capital project status, just briefly, those numbers are good, those revised estimates, is that stuff that's been done? Are those pretty hard? Because that's a huge savings, based on what we have.
No, those are, those are, those are good numbers.
Okay. Good. That's great.
So, I'm sorry, yeah, the capital report, that is good news, especially given the fact that the capital committee made a determination not to go forward for FY17 with the request to finish the window replacement project, but to hold on for that, and, because that number was hovering in the 260, 270,000 range. So, the way that the capital budgets have worked in the past, as I understand it, is that the available balance in the capital projects fund could be utilized, for example, in FY18 to help supplement what would be that final cost to finish the window replacement project.
I think it depends on how the warrant was written, we're trying to be a little bit more specific and time-sensitive, but...
Right. Well, what would happen is, this warrant would be written saying, of the 187,000 of costs, we're going to use 111 previously allocated in town meetings from previous years, and they're going to, then they would ask for 75,000 of additional funds to complete the project.
So, that's, that's, that's great.
Yeah, that's a very positive number to look at. So, there's a request from Dr. Brown, which I wholly support and recommend favorable action on. As we went through the budgeting process, we were very focused on staffing and adding the two additional sections. One of the things that we didn't focus as much on, and certainly was not included in the FY17 budget, were the resources necessary to outfit those two additional classrooms. So, what you have in front of you is a proposed budget for doing so. The total cost is 25,000, estimated at $25,200, and the recommendation is to purchase these materials and this furniture from FY17 funds, of which I hope you, having just gone through the end-of-the-year projection, that you're in agreement that there certainly are funds available to meet this need.
On this subject, so there's furniture for the classrooms, how about the technology pieces, the component, the screens, overheads? Was that considered, or otherwise, other strategy?
They've already been installed.
Where did they come from? Were they...
The replacement cycle. We moved some things around. One of the classrooms was already outfitted, the room that we leased to the tech collaborative was already outfitted, that's our equipment, and a room currently used for tutoring needed to be outfitted. So, over April vacation, and subsequently, Anthony fit that into the replacement cycle. So, we're all set there, but thank you for thinking of that. Also, with additional funds for this year, each of our classrooms have a set number of mobile devices through iPads and Chromebooks, and we made sure that we accounted that in our planning as well.
Yes, if there's an additional classroom, there's talk about potentially adding a kindergarten, where would that, how would that be outfitted?
Well, we, yep, we have to figure that out.
Of the budget.
Items in storage, or there's nothing usable?
Well, thanks to the capital budget, we'll be replacing the cafeteria tables and chairs, so I can do some bait and switch in the kindergarten classroom. Kindergarten tends to have more open space with just a few larger tables and chairs.
Yeah. Of course. Well, have we historically moved some, so can any of these, like the dining room tables, the gym mats, can any of that be moved into a purchase from this year's funds, out of the, because that was a capital?
Well, we could vote to do anything we wanted to, technically.
But that's a plan.
I always, well, I've got questions, I always hate this part, just because, for principle reason of taking money that, it's like we said, okay, this is our budget, all right? And then taking money that we didn't spend, and it's not like, I don't believe, it's not like we saved a ton, it's just that we didn't spend it, because we always over-budget, because when we do the budget, we're basing it on a budget that we don't know if we're going to spend the money or not. This type of thing would have normally been a capital request, right? I would, well, I mean, you can, I suppose you can move whatever you want to. I would not be in favor of, I mean, we've already allocated the money for the, or we've already voted for those things. But this is not an opportunity, I don't think, and everybody can argue, to say, we've got an extra 200 grand, let's spend that, I mean, allocate it towards a new roof if you needed to, or something like that, I suppose, but I would like to keep it limited. But my question is... But I, but my question is, it seems like there would be, well, I don't want to cause us to spend more money, but if you're, if you're getting 15 desks, there's going to be more than 15 kids in the classroom. It, it sort of implies that there was sort of no, no furniture in the classroom, there wasn't even a teacher's, a teacher's desk in the classroom, is there, nothing we can peel out of this?
The teacher's desk would, would move with the ELL tutor, for example, we're adding an additional flex teacher, so I've accounted for all of that. The tech collaborative program bought, brought their own furniture, so other than the technology in that room, nothing in there is ours.
So we've cannibalized all the, as our, as the population declined...
We have.
Cannibalized furniture and things like that.
We have. I triple-checked with Mr. Gimlet with regard to what's in storage, and as things, as things break, we replace them with what's been in storage. We, we're not asking for 15 desks, tho, those aren't, those aren't individual student modules, that's flex furniture for two or three students per, per seating area. So that, that, on this page is furniture for two full classrooms.
They're not made out of platinum, are they?
No, no, no. But, but in this day and age, we do shop, we outfit classrooms with what's called flexible furniture so that teachers can, it's not the old desks in a row anymore, thank goodness.
And along the same lines with the next page, I don't mean to be jumping ahead, the, the funds, the Pine Hill revenue, the special funds, is that, none of that money can be used, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what is actually money that's available to be spent. You know, what happens to the, to this money?
Well, you know, the building rental fund, it's possible that you could spend some of, some of that money. I, I think that it, some of, part of the answer would depend on how, what the genesis of that fund, how that fund was created. If it was, if it was first created under one of the Mass General laws, then the statute limits how, how, how funds that, that remain in that revolving account can be spent. Typically, but my, but my, my sense is that perhaps this building rental fund was not, was not created initially using one of the Mass General laws statutes, so, and is totally under the control of the school committee. So it would give the school committee more latitude in, in how those funds are spent. But, but typically, in my experience, building rental funds have been, if, if there's, if the school committee has the authority to, to spend those monies as it sees fit, are typically related to, you know, one-time costs that, that are for repair, major repair or maintenance items, you know, that are, are needed in an emergency perhaps. Oftentimes, if the major source of that building rental income is from renting out the gymnasium, then those funds are used to, you know, purchase equipment or, or provide updates to the gymnasium area.
So the, the preschool fund pays for the preschool, right? I mean, that's not, that's not completely self-funding, right?
No, but we, we, that's right, that, that pays for a substantial part of the operational...
So the prior year fund balance and the revenue, or is it, well, I guess we don't need to spend time on that now. I, I would like to, to visit what this money is used for, and like the building rental fund, you know, the replacing the gym floor is potentially an issue that we have, that's really expensive, but is problematic because of the way the place was built. I'm assuming all of that rental money comes from renting the gym, so some of those capital, I sort of understand what we can do with it.
The building rental fund, is that where the rent has gone from the classroom that you've been renting out that's not going to be from a classroom? Would that have gone into this building rental fund?
I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, I'm not either.
I was just wondering what the source of revenue is, is it from the gymnasium, or is it from this classroom that was rented out?
I, I, I'm not clear on the $6,000 a year, or whatever it is that we, we take in and where that goes. The building usage policy establishes rental fees, so whenever Boy Scouts or recreation programs or what have you rent our, rent our building, we collect a fee. So that's, that's what this is.
From the classroom?
I don't, I have a feeling that may have gone into a different town account, or, I'm not sure.
Can we learn more about this for next fall?
Yes, we certainly can. I think that would be a good idea.
Just really quickly, though, I know that we had talked earlier this year about making sure that the building rental fund was used to pay overtime for custodians, because that custodian line, overtime budget line had gone up, and we thought this is, that's in part what that's used for. I also believe that the, we were given access to the rental money, I don't know what the account went into, but it was to be used at our discretion, was my understanding.
And I, my recollection, at, at least last year, I'm not sure about this year, that we steered it to with one of our, one of our building committee projects, extraordinary maintenance kind of a project.
So we're gonna, we're going to figure out what this is, sort of over the summer, I guess, and talk about it in terms of how we can maybe, just so, just so everybody knows what it's used for, so we'll have a plan for what's going on.
Right, I, I have a thought and perhaps a suggestion for moving forward. I, I personally believe that items such as, as what's being requested for this expenditure are, are effectively one-time costs, you know, furniture, classroom furniture has a life expectancy of reasonably, you know, depending on what it is, 10 to 15 years and even longer. I, I would imagine that this furniture at the Pine Hill School now that has been there for many, many, many years beyond 15. Also from my experience, Greg, is that replacement under, replacement of classroom furniture sets, I, I have not typically seen that budgeted under capital plans, but rather as an ongoing yearly replacement cycle that is budgeted within the operating budget. And Barbara, we do have an equipment line, but that line was cut as part of the FY17 budget. And, and so one of the main reasons why, why I would be advocating for this expenditure, again, it's a one-time cost, we, when we were building the budget and adding the classroom sections, we were also at the same time looking at all of our expense lines. And we knew that, I knew that this might be an issue coming up, but at that time, we also knew and realized that we have a fairly healthy positive variance. So to me, this expenditure request makes sense, especially in the context of the whole budget development cycle and, and how that went and that, so I would, again, ask you to, to support using FY16 monies for that. But in terms of a question which is a good one, what if we do have to add another kindergarten section? So what we will do is, we'll get information before next fall on the use of these revolving funds. And if, in fact, the school committee has, has authority to spend the building rental fund as it sees fit, or certainly, you know, expenditures that are closely related, my sense is that that would be, we could go there as a source of funding for kindergarten furniture, you know, should we need it.
Do you have language for a motion, or does, would you say, does anybody want to move that we spend $25,200 from the FY16 budget in order to purchase classroom furniture for two new classrooms?
I think that would do it, and if, if that's in the form of a motion, someone could move that.
Yes, well, that was...
Well, do I, I'd like to just amend, I think maybe it'd be better to do a not-to- exceed and do a little bit more, just in case there's a, what, what happened, I mean, was shipping included, is, was it shipping free? You just never know.
There's enough in the budget for shipping, I'm sure, someplace. Okay, how do you amend it? How, would you, you, you move whatever you want to move and see if you can get a second.
All right, what you said, but not to exceed, we'll say 26,000? That shouldn't be enough, I'm thinking.
Anybody wants, anybody want to second that? I'll second it. Any, I like, that was nice, I like that. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
For the platinum furniture we're getting.
The platinum collection.
All right, so, it's getting close to eight, so we want to move along, right? So with the approval of the family handbook, if we can avoid deep discussions, there's not going to be a deep discussion on this, is there?
I have a handout that summarizes all the changes in the handbook.
Can we, do we need to discuss it in depth, or do we need to just ask if there, if anybody has any comments?
There are definitely some comments, so...
So can we just move to comments?
Yes.
Just if anybody has any comments.
One of my comments was around recess, we used taking away recess as a punishment.
Where's that, what's the reference on that, where's that?
It's, it's... Under the code of conduct agreement on page 16.
16.
And your question is...
I think that, that could be something that we look at, changing that line where there's loss of recess, it's been a discussion, I've heard from many parents and through challenge success, and...
Yeah, so I think the part of it, one I've been hearing too, is that for some of the students who most need recess, those are the ones who are, it seems to be, are being disproportionately penalized by losing their recess, not necessarily often, but that that's what seems to be happening, and is there something else that could happen that would allow them to keep what's really important to them, which is the opportunity to run around outside and release some of that energy?
And it definitely is in the spirit with challenge success. What you're referring to is a list of possible consequences for violating expected behavior at Pine Hill School, and sometime, we certainly discourage taking recess away as a disciplinary measure. Sometimes it is an effective leverage or a reasonable time of day for teachers to be available, or administration to be available to process with students. So I appreciate that in the challenge of, the spirit of challenge success, recess is integral to learning and physical development and social development.
In the last year, Chikering has amended their policy, so loss of recess is not an option for punishment.
Who amended their policy?
Chikering has, their principal sent out notice.
So we don't want to, I don't think we want to, to get a deep dive into the, into the language, right? If we want to, what's the best, if we want to address this, we can, we can come back and change it anytime, I assume, right?
And I want to be clear, this is not a policy. So be careful about the language we use.
I, I think that ultimately, the school committee approves the handbook, so, you know, it, it is ultimately the school committee's authority to delete language, change language. I would hope that the committee would only do that, however, after consultation with the administration and the staff and discussing, in, in this case perhaps, rather than change the language at this point in time, ask the administration to, over the first half of the new school year, to document how many times that happens and, and for, for our review and, and the reasons why. I certainly understand and, and agree with the overall objective of not, of not penalizing students in this way, but I, I could imagine frankly that there may be some times when it is appropriate. And, and perhaps, you know, there, there, there are a number of examples, but it would be helpful, I think, in this case, to give the administration opportunity to take a look at that, perhaps document really how often it happens and for what reason. If a student is misbehaving consistently during recess and other, other disciplinary actions, you know, have not helped, perhaps that might be an appropriate course of action. So that's just one example, but I, I think that's what I would recommend. I think it's a good, good point to raise, and it would be helpful, though, in the context to, to really understand, you know, is, is this a problem? How often does this occur? You know, what, under what circumstances? If we saw that this is a regular occurrence, I think that's something we really need to look at closely and, and perhaps change.
That sounds reasonable to me. Jennifer, is that?
That sounds reasonable.
Sound good to you? Okay, any other?
I just have a quick question. So I noticed that you, there's something about not using telephones or cell phones to video or audio record fellow students. What is the policy about, because they have their Chromebooks or whatever, and they may be recording for projects, but is there something, some sort of language about not recording outside of class?
And this is specific to the boss. The way it's currently worded, it's specific to the boss.
Oh, okay.
Are they allowed to have them in school?
It's a parent's prerogative, they're, they're not allowed to be out in school, but they're certainly, they're certainly mobile devices that we're using, obviously for educational purposes, but...
But so is there, though, then, something about recording when students don't want to be recorded, or, I mean, if you're using it for something, but then kids are talking, you record, is, I'm just thinking, asking if there's some sort of thought about, some sort of, not policy, but practice?
There's, and we're, we're topic jumping, so I'm sorry if I sound confused, I want to get back to the recess piece, but the, our guidelines under digital citizenship would talk about consent and expected behavior and educational use. It's, cellphone access is more readily available to elementary students, and we've, this year, we've had an increased number of disciplinary infractions around not making great choices with cell phones on the buses. So that, that's, in that context is what that, that is.
So that'll be clarified here, because that's not, you know, what I've got, that's just a...
What page are you on, Ann?
I'm on 36. This, it says, the sheet that Barbara handed out, the last one, says page 36. So I'm on the handbook, page 36.
Well, put context around that for...
And then put context on it, it just says telephones, it talks about cell phones, but doesn't mention, it just says ad language about video, audio reporting offense. There's no language referencing on the bus, so it's just asking for clarification. Does that make sense?
That kind of touches on a general question I have for this document. It looks like there's some placeholders and notes, notes to self, in, stressing the red, for a work in progress, is that, is that the case? Okay. As far, like, there's the content for the school just managing.
And this is a summary of those, yeah.
Okay. So that, that covers most of my questions. Yeah, so we, I can't approve a document that's not done yet.
Right, so we can't really approve it, can we, or provisionally, or, I mean, if it's...
We can change it at any time, because it says at the beginning that it's online, because it can be changed at any time.
That's dynamic, yeah.
So we could do it provisionally.
Well, how, how, if we have to vote on it, how can we change it at any time?
La, I'm sorry, in last year, at this time, I presented a list of recommended changes, and then the final edits were done over the summer, and I...
Okay.
Then brought it back at the fall.
Yeah, because some of the information's not, not available until...
So we'd vote it again in the fall, in this final form, okay? All right, so what else? Or any other?
Did you want to circle back about the recess?
I just said I'm happy to put a qualifier in the current language about... Uh, just that I'm happy to put a qualifier in the current language about a loss of recess while, you know, an occasional strategy isn't, is discouraged because of the intent that children have an opportunity, blah, 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 blah. So I'm happy to put a qualifier in there.
And then we'll document any use of it during the fall? And, um, will you look at research as well, as to why? That that's, you know, not, not currently recommended?
I, 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 I think Bill's suggestion to look at it in the fall to see if it's really an issue is a good one.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I thought was determined. I, I wouldn't add a qualifier, I, I would just leave it the way it is for now. There was, I know there was a suggestion that was brought forward regarding, um, adding some language to let parents know how they could update the, uh, the, uh, the student's lunch account?
That's indicated, page twenty-six.
Okay.
So that would have to be something that we circle back to in the fall? See what's left, yeah?
Anything else? We're going to approve this with edits to be made over the summer to approve it again in the, for the final version in the fall.
Conditional approval, subject to, to further review at the first meeting in the fall. If that works.
So looking for a motion to provisionally approve the family handbook two thousand sixteen seventeen for final approval in the fall, sorry, I don't understand. Does that make sense? Anybody want to move that? You can just say so moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, it's approved, conditional approval. My god. The technology plan? Is this, uh? Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. The next item, item A, conditional approval of the conditional approval, of the school improvement.
Right, thank you Greg. Uh, I'm going to let Barbara just speak to some highlights if, if she'd like, but, so this is an annual item that comes before the school committee at this time of year. And, uh, the, the school committees, the, the tradition here is that school committees in Sherbroe and in Dover and at the region approve student improvement, school improvement plans. I, I would just like to point out that technically, the statute gives that authority for approval to the superintendent of schools. Superintendent of schools is then required to share that school improvement plan with school committees. It, it, no, it, it doesn't matter really. It's been a tradition in, in the district for the school committee to approve it. I, I think that's fine. There, there's, this is, that's an issue that I've, 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 I've worked with on a number of occasions before. Uh, the law was, the statute originally had school committees approving the improvement plan back in nineteen ninety-three. That statute was changed back in two thousand and three. But if you go on the DESI website, DESI still has the old language, the original language on their website. So it cre-, it has created over the years a lot of confusion. My feeling is that it's been the tradition, I would just keep with the tradition. Given that, uh, I want you to know that the leadership team has had a lot of discussion over the last two to three months around school improvement plans. The timing of when they should be approved, the timing of, of when the school improvement plan should be developed. One of the points that, that we've talked about is that the school improvement plan is a significant document that the school council spends a lot of time on working with the administration staff. And the way that, uh, the timeline has worked here is that we go through a budget development process, the budget is completed, it's been, it, it gets decided. And then the school council, after, after that, finalizes the school improvement plan. There's no opportunity in that timeline for any, any financial resources that might be required or might, might be effective for, for, uh, a school improvement plan initiative that goes along with it. And so I often wonder if that impacts, uh, what the school improvement plan actually looks like. So we've, we've been talking at, at the leadership team level about perhaps developing a, some kind of a different cycle for developing the school improvement plan. We don't have a specific recommendation at this point. So, so based on that, as well as Barbara's comments earlier about, uh, for example, sharing the results of the, of the survey? The, the parent survey? You know, we'll, we'll have those results in the fall, really. There may be something there that the school council looks at and says, gee, this is important. We really want to address this now and we want it to be a focus. And, and it would be helpful if that's in the school improvement plan. So that's just one example. So what, what I'm recommending is that the committee conditionally approve, is, there's that phrase again, sorry. Conditionally approve the school improvement plan with the understanding that it may be brought back to you in the fall. Could be September, October, or perhaps not, with, uh, with some adjustments for change. And by that time, uh, we may also have some more specific recommendations on how the school improvement plan may be developed in the future. You know, one idea is that it be a multi-year plan, which would allow for, uh, which would allow for, uh, the, the timing of the budget development process for the following year to play into, uh, play into that process, so. That's our, our thinking at this point.
Okay.
Sorry, can I, sorry, do you have a comment?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to get used to my new role.
I was going to say, it, yeah, it's hard, isn't it? So for this year, it, it, I, I would like to focus on the things that are our responsibility and not spend a lot of time on things that are, are not necessarily our responsibility. So this sounds like legally it's not really. Happy to have a discussion about it, but not like an in-depth, point-by-point discussion. I have a couple of questions, general questions. Anyway, does anybody have any thoughts, Anne, perhaps?
Um, I actually like the con-, your ideas that we can have discussion about it, but don't necessarily need to dug too deeply. I do think it's important for us to discuss this because as we do have some authority over curriculum, and this informs curriculum to some degree, that I think that we do have some authority, not over specifically, but there is relevance to what we do have authority over.
Move on.
So, just really quickly, I think that one of the things maybe to think about, which ties into what Bill was saying, thinking about how the school improvement plan is created. So for like, in the, the second page of the first chart, one of them, the third action step is to share best practices within and across grade levels, K through five. Shouldn't that be happening anyway? Like, I don't, that to me doesn't seem to be something that should become part of an action plan, because it should be happening.
Continue to share, what about that? I, I get, yeah, I'm with you.
I'm just sort of saying, so what is the, what's the point of this? Is it to cover the, the, the points that we, the things that we should already be doing? Or is it to focus on specifics? Things that we, that the school wants to be focusing on for the next year or two, or however many? I just think if you're as discussing how this is developed, that might be some, a dis-, conversation with Anne.
Yeah, and the context for that specific piece is relative to authentic assessment and project-based learning in science and social studies, so. It wasn't meant to be a big overarching statement.
That's right, it was specifically for this. Well, I get, but even so, regardless, it's, I know it's happening all the time.
But, but it's not. And we're changing some structures next year. We have, we have common planning time within grade levels, we have very little time across grade levels, and we're intentionally changing structures next year for vertical articulation and collaboration, so. So the, the within, but the across is not as robust as it needs to be.
But so then the action step then, to clarify specifically, because then it'd also be easier to benchmark it, is that you're changing the str-, the change of the structure to allow for? Does that make sense? Okay, sorry.
So, no, 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 I was going to say, since this is conditional approval, if there's a lot of questions about it, can we address it in another format other than?
Well, well, the discussion internally we might have regarding that specific example might be that the action step actually would be an expected or anticipated outcome having to do with, with the, uh, you know, with, with the work that's being done. And, and I can, I can also imagine that while, while it's best practice to, to certainly share resources, while it's, while it's advisable and, and certainly good practice, if not best practice, to, uh, to share resources and ideas and materials across and within grade levels, uh, sometimes that just doesn't happen. And so if, if it's identified, uh, as an expected or anticipated outcome in, in a school improvement plan, my sense is that the, the, uh, the rationale for that being in the plan is to highlight that as, as a need and, and outcome that will become embedded, you know, in practice at, moving forward, so that, you know, in future years, you wouldn't see that necessarily in a school improvement plan. So, uh, I, I, I think that just in general, you know, certain, certain goals or, or action items, you know, which we sometimes feel and, and think, I mean, and we all have these thoughts, really? Don't we already do that? Sometimes we just don't, so, so I think highlighting it, raising the awareness of that by highlighting it in, in a school improvement plan helps, helps to, uh, helps to, to move that, that forward.
So how, what, what would you, what would you like to do in terms of?
Well, I, I understand what Bill was just saying. I think what Barbara had said was, the action step it, that's being taken is that they're restructuring some things so that there is time for this to take place. To me, that's the action plan and then, that that's highlight, it's not just highlighting the need for, it's providing specific steps that are being taken. I think that the school improvement plan has sometimes been so- soft in some ways. It's, it's talking about things we'd like to do, let's be specific, this is what we're doing, to get to where we want to go.
Yeah.
Speaking of that, I, I just have some comments, like, it just seems like, I'm just not sure how you get some of this stuff. Expected or anticipated outcome to consistently model research-based practices to increase resiliency and mindfulness. How would, how would you know, uh, this is rhetorical. How would you know if resilience, resiliency is increased or mindfulness is increased? So, that seems, that's kind of vague, but that's neither here nor there. The other part is, uh, with regard to, uh, challenge success and, and, and some of these things, the Metro West Health adolescent, Metro West Health Adolescent Health Survey, which I had in the past, I've had some issues with some of their questions and tried to get some information and, and it was difficult. So it says thirty-seven percent of students report that their life is very stressful. Do we know if that's because of school? Because it seems to imply that's a balance between the quest for high academic standards. Do, do we know if that's because of school, or it could be other stuff? Anybody know?
It doesn't matter, quite frankly. Our approach, our approach is to, uh, to teach coping strategies, no matter where the stress is coming from.
Right, but I, it was in the context of striking a balance between the quest for high academic standards and the importance of maintaining a supportive and positive school culture. So I was just curious if, if those questions were aligned to say, yes, they came from school?
I think they were, when we looked at it. I'm the school advisory council. It's been a few months now since we looked at the survey, but I believe that the questions were specific to stress coming from school.
From school, okay, alright.
And there was also a baseline challenge success survey that was done. So I think, not this next year, but the following year, we'll do a follow-up to that survey, so we can see...
Different than the Metro West, okay.
Right, so we can see changes that probably have been made because of that program.
Okay.
But it should be noted that what's not taken out is what the parents are adding. The extra classes, the extra tutoring, that's, that's school-related, so it falls under stress caused by school, but it's not school-caused stress, because the parents often are the ones who are implementing these extra things. Just saying.
So, I, I think we're looking for a motion to conditionally approve the two thousand sixteen seventeen school improvement plan?
So moved.
Can I second, I can second this chair, but can I second it, or no?
Typically, the chair does not.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any discussion, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carries?
If I just may add, next week when you all meet as a joint school committee, the district goals, I believe, will be talked about in more detail, and they'll provide you a context for our goals as well, uh, because they're, they're, they dovetail, uh, our school goals dovetail nicely with the district goals.
Thank you. Alright. Pardon me?
Was that five oh, or?
It was five oh. Five oh. Anne? Moved and?
Yeah, I got that.
It's okay. So the tech plan, item nine?
Okay, ask Dr. Reddick to just say a few words on that.
Oh, we, oh, okay, so we don't, I'm thinking that he's...
This is a review, it doesn't, no.
Okay.
It's, it's your second look at the, the technology plan, first look for our two new members. It was a collaborative effort developed with Mr. Attac, who was the director of technology, and myself, and Diane Papatopoulos, the tech integration specialist, along with, um, those who are serving on the technology advisory committee specifically from Pine Hill. It was Frank Hess as the school committee representative. But I think the most powerful aspect of the writing this tech plan was looking at the National Education Technology Plan, thinking about where we were as it, as the, the three districts, Pine Hill lens, led by Dr. Brown, Teresa Biennium, Nicole Dara, and Lori Ryan, who was in the back of the room. But thinking about how do we set the context for our technology mission, vision, and guiding principles within the lens of learning and teaching, and that's, the learning is what the students know, able to do, understanding can explain, and the teaching is how the teachers facilitate that. How the leadership supports this technology vision? How can we assess children using technology to support that learning? And then what's the infrastructure that's needed? When you look at the technology plan supplement, which will come to you in October, that's that next step for Pine Hill. Here's laying the groundwork. You'll see some of these elements in the school improvement plan that Dr. Brown has developed, and also in, partially in part of the, the district goals. So this is just another look at it. I presented a more comprehensive look at it the last time and certainly open to any questions you might have or comments or feedback certainly from on this draft.
Anybody have any questions? You can?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I have a request. When I look at this, along with a lot of other stuff, but my head spins. I don't really know what it means. So I would like, if everybody else would like, again, in September or sometime, not a big deal, I'd kind of like to see how we use technology, just from a bird's eye view. What, what were we doing five years ago and what are we doing now? Because, you know what I'm saying, I, I just, I really, it's, it's unclear. I know we talk about it a lot. But does that make, does that make sense? I mean, how, what were we doing five years ago, what are we doing now, sort of, and what's best practice? Does that, does that make sense?
I, I think it'd be fabulous to do a presentation for the school committee, at a school committee meeting, where we, where we, uh, highlight how we are using technology, and we can certainly add... and we can certainly add to that references to how we used to.
Yeah. I think it'd be interesting, because I've read stuff about people moving away from a lot of technology, because kids have so much of it in the home. So whatever best practice might be considered, whatever that might be, maybe we don't do it because we can't afford it, maybe we don't do it because I don't think it's best practice.
And that comment, it's like, you know, best practice is this, and we don't do it that way because, or we feel otherwise. Yeah, it helps give some relevance and perspective to where we are.
So, yeah, no, no rush, but it would, it would be, it would be helpful for me, anyway. All right, so we did that. So we're onto the consent agenda. I think we can move that, but we want to kind of identify that sign.
No, we do have a review, the draft of the school year goals. So including your packet, so this is another review item. We're happy to hear your comments, any suggestions you might have for us to take under consideration. The goal here is the call, the, let me not use that word. The intention is that this, the, the school year goals, after any input that we've received from the three committees, we'll, we'll determine what to do with that input, make, make adjustments. You'll have the final draft for the joint school committee meeting next Tuesday. That's when we'd be looking for approval for the 216-17 school year goals. Couple of comments. In this document, we've, we've attempted, over last year, to, to narrow our focus so that we have fewer action items. I think we've accomplished that by a little bit. I would tell you that we need to, as, as three districts, and a K-12 district, we need to, in my opinion, continue to move towards school year goals that are, allow us to be more focused, look at initiatives or issues in much more depth, as opposed to having a number of action items that really may give us breadth, breadth of an experience, but become more checkoff items. So I think the leadership team is continuing to work on that, and this is, this is a bit of an improvement, I think, over last year. The other thing that we've done in this plan, in this document, we have added, again, a column, anticipated outcome or expectations. And the, the ultimate goal in writing, in moving forward, is to, and we're not going to get there with, with next year's plan, but our hope is to really have, as part of the plan, a clear understanding of having a goal, why we have, why we've identified that as a goal, what we expect or anticipate that goal to, to yield, if you will, and then be able to identify some real measurable outcomes. You know, with, with data, hopefully, there may be times, and there are in this case, where some goals, action items, are measured more anecdotally. And so, but, but the leadership team has really, I think, made a good leap towards getting to that place eventually. So that, that was our, that's really been our, our thinking in developing this document. So I think it was just important to, to have that as context, and that, we see that last column, if you will, as a sort of, for lack of a better phrase, a measuring stick. You know, again, as I indicated, much of, of which is still anecdotal, but really working hard on, you know, trying to benchmark the, the action items to, to some real data that we can collect through the process, and start to have some, I don't want to say more meaningful measuring stick, because I think anecdotal data can, depending on, on what we're focusing on, be effective feedback. But, but that's, that's the attempt, and that's the effort that I see going forward with this document.
All right. I've been way ahead of myself, school year goals. So the consent agenda. Normally, we would just move to approve that, but we want to talk a little bit about these, don't we? I mean, the, just to acknowledge the DSEF grants and all the great stuff that, that they do, right?
Yes, and I'm happy to speak quickly to it. Actually, the DSEF co-chairs met with all of the grant recipients yesterday in a more formal ceremony to recognize the award and grant recipients, and to provide them with information on how to access the funds for these grants. It was, it was well-attended, and what's important to note is that the, the foundation grants for this year are almost twice the grant amounts that were awarded last year, $105,000 last year to $195,000 this year. A really significant amount of money. And a number of these, a number of these grants are really exciting, and will truly add value both to students and, and to staff. And we, of course, thank the Dover Sherborne Education Foundation for all of their hard work. We thank them for their commitment to the Dover and Sherborne schools. I'd like to thank all of the parents and community members, business members, who work with the foundation in raising and donating funds. It's, this number, in my opinion, is, is an incredible number. It is, it is really incredible. Barbara, do you want to just quickly speak to the Pine Hill grants?
Yes, thank you. We were delighted to be awarded $32,833 in grants specific to Pine Hill. They will enhance our continued efforts at computer science, maker space, coding, and creativity, specifically in the library and the technology lab. And also, brimming with books is helping us at the tail end of lots of work with our literacy consultants, our classroom. Teachers are eager to have more instructional resources through text sets across genre, through anchor text, texts that teachers use to showcase what readers and writers do as they're selecting a focus area for a lesson. And so that, that brimming with books grant is specific to third, fourth, and fifth grade instructional resources, students and teachers. In addition, we are part of a district grant for $10,000, which will help us launch professional development and work with student community and community at large, eventually, on how to be culturally responsive in our practices. And I didn't mention in my memo, but there was also Pine Hill, in collaboration with all of our DS schools, will benefit from the $25,000 grant that was awarded for challenge success continued initiatives. So we're very excited to have the piece that's especially exciting, brimming with books. Several of our educators will be working together this summer to talk about shifting practices with our bookrooms, and, and how to acquire resources that are, that are more aligned with the higher, the higher rigor and relevance that we're trying to bring into our curriculum. And that's the piece behind the scenes with teachers working cross-grade level that really allows for rich collaboration, and so, very excited.
And the Pine Hill sign?
In addition, there is a beloved tradition of the outgoing fifth grade class to gift something to the school. Usually it, a tree, a bench. Last year, there was a fabulous addition to the teacher's room that involved lots of caffeine for educators. But this year, I wanted to, and I included a picture, because the, the fifth grade class would like to gift a new sign for the front entrance of Pine Hill School. While our sign is very functional, it's, it's a little dowdy and dated, and through the generosity of parents and families and students, they're, they'd like to
That's great.
make and install. In addition, on behalf of the fifth grade class, we, as you know, we gather every Friday for all-school meeting, in addition to other special assemblies. And one of the things we do around patriotism is sing and pledge the flag, and our school flag is, has served us well, but the, the fifth grade parents want to replace it, it's a little, it's a little, it's a little, it's a little shabby. So we're thankful to the fifth, the outgoing fifth grade class for their thoughtfulness.
Thank you. So would someone like to move to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Somebody like to second that?
Second.
Like a discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item 12, we don't need to discuss communications, just for information. And we adjourn, then go into executive session?
We do.
Okay. So, would I like to move to adjourn?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Typically, you go into executive session, and then you would go back to open session only for the purpose of adjournment.
Okay, so now I just need to poll for the purpose of going into executive session, for the purpose of conducting a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. So polling is just asking, right? Raise your hand.
Right, so I suppose, but is it, but then can you say not to return?
Not to return to open session. And then we adjourn in an executive session?
Technically, under Robert's rules, you have to adjourn in open session. You can't adjourn in open meeting and executive session. So, so the language, only to return to open, to the open?
To not return to open session.
To not return to open set, well, you would return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment.
Yeah, for further discussion.
Wow, I don't think we've ever done this before.
No.
Okay, so polling to go into executive session. All those want to go into executive session, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Okay. We good?
Yes.
Okay.
We're good?
Excellent.
Yeah, get a chair.
Then we're good. We're not even going to do the executive session. Okay.